Okay, I think we'll go ahead and start with Committee of the Whole. Okay, we're gonna go with the third item on the Committee of the Whole, which is a presentation by Port of Bellingham and Waterfront District Master Plan Development Agreement. Mr. Fix?
Can I go first?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor.
President?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I've been trying to be real quiet, and I think I've done a good job.
You're doing a good job.
So, today, we've invited Rob here so that he could talk about the agreement between the port and Harcourt, the developer of the first phase of the waterfront investments. And everybody knows Rob, he's Executive Director of the port. And I think the thing that I was most concerned about, as I told Rob, was that there would be consistency between the agreement that the port and the city have and the agreement that Harcourt and the port have. And so Tara's gonna talk a little bit about that consistency through those two agreements before Rob describes what the agreement is. Tara will describe that after Rob describes.
She has to make sure it's consistent first.
Yeah, that way we can, you know, correct any mistake you might make, Rob, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for having me here today. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about this agreement. The port is very excited to start the process down at the waterfront. It's been a long process, a lot of public process involved. You have a timeline in front of you that kind of recaps that. We started off with a waterfront futures group prior to the port buying the property in 2005. Shortly after purchasing the property, they formed the waterfront advisory group. These were made of citizens from the community. Purchased the property in December of 2005. Lots of studies and draft plans and regulations were done in between. You'll recall that December of 2013, you and the Port Commission both approved a master development plan that called for the rezoning of the property. And then just recently, within the last week and a half, we arrived at a master development agreement with an Ireland developer called Harcourt. The waterfront district has five distinct areas in it. You'll see the purple area at the top of the screen there called the marine trades area. This is currently marine trades and always will be marine trades. It's, most of the property is owned by the port. There's a couple parcels in there that are privately owned. The city used to own some parcels in there prior to doing a swap with the port for property down in the orange area, Cornwall Beach. The Cornwall Beach area used to be owned 51% by the port, 49% by the city. Port doesn't do parks very well, the city does. The port does marine trades very well, so we decided to just swap those holdings. The city's holdings in the purple area for the port's holdings in the orange area. Right above the orange area is the green called the shipping terminal. This is a very underutilized asset, hasn't been used since Georgia Pacific packed up. Used to ship a lot of aluminum out and a lot of wood products in and out. It's been idle for over 10 years now. And one of the hurdles or problems we've had in putting this productive use is the fact that it's not a very big piece of property. It just didn't have the critical mass it needed for a proper lay-down area to go with shipping activities. So we've incorporated the log pond area, the yellow area, and the shipping terminal together to make one big light industrial area. And the thinking behind that is that if we have the critical mass, the size, that we can eventually attract a serious shipper to utilize the shipping terminal. And then the fifth area in this is called the downtown waterfront. It's depicted in blue in the picture in front of you, and this is largely what we will be talking about today. The blue area again is the downtown waterfront area. It's 37 acres in total. Now, the MDA, or the master development agreement, does not incorporate the full 37 acres. It only uses 19 of that blue area. It is zoned for some fairly high densities. One of the things that Harcourt and other developers have expressed to us, and along with city staff, is the importance of the connections between the blue area and the now purple area, the central business district. It's considered to be extremely important that this be a seamless connection between the two areas and that they don't be viewed as two distinct, separate areas. The port in June of 2013 issued an RFP, a request for proposals. We received seven responses. Four of those were for what we consider to be master developer proposals, and three were kind of single project-specific proposals. Of the four proposals, we evaluated them. There was a team put together from the port, the city, Western, Watkin County, and the port's consultant, Heartland, to evaluate those proposals. And of those four, we unanimously selected Harcourt Developments. They were the ones we thought had the experience of developing in a brownfield site and the balance sheet that allowed them to see the project through to the finish. A result of the unanimous selection of Harcourt was entering into what we called an ENA, or an exclusive negotiating agreement with them. That was done in March of 2014. We later approved a term sheet in April of 2014, and then we spent the next year negotiating this master development agreement. During the negotiations in the master development agreement, the port conducted due diligence on Harcourt. This involved financial due diligence, looking at their balance sheet and the results of some of their projects. We conducted physical due diligence, that I went over there and I looked at their corporate office, I looked at their development, the Titanic quarter, I looked at the Park West development in Dublin, and I also hopped over to Liverpool to look at the beginnings of their development there. We conducted some legal due diligence to talk to them about some of their, some of the projects they had that resulted in litigation. And then we checked references. This was done with development partners of theirs and with public officials in different areas that they, they've done projects. Harcourt's vision is largely consistent with the master plan. It calls for commercial, residential, some adaptive reuse, lots of parks and open spaces. You'll see a drawing there that is a depiction of what it could look like when it's all built out. Now, the drawing consists of much more than their 19 acres. It's more like the 37-acre site that I showed you earlier. So this is truly just kind of a dream at this point. It probably won't end up looking anything like this 20 years from now, but it's where they've started. Again, the agreement is called for 19 acres. That's kind of outlined in black bold there, in crosshatched. The full pink area is the downtown waterfront area that you saw in an earlier slide in blue. So you can see that the Harcourt area does not take up the full pink. And then there's a separate parcel in there in the middle, it's a little rectangle with six acres labeled on it, and that is an area being reserved for Western Crossing. We believe this is gonna be a public-private partnership, and it's not that in the legal term of public-private partnership, but it does, it does have the look and feel of a public-private partnership because you have the port doing the cleanup, you have the city installing all public utilities and arterial streets and any parks, and you have Harcourt doing the buildings, the interior roads, and any open space. The master development agreement calls for a timeline for Harcourt to meet certain milestones. This is a default schedule. It's not the schedule that we envision development will take place at. Instead, it's a scheduled, whereas if they don't meet that schedule, they're in default under the agreement. So actual development should occur faster than the schedule you're looking at. Granary building needs to be completed by 2019. A second building, assumed to be around 40,000 square feet, should be completed by 2021. A third building by 2024, and so on. You'll see that a million square feet needs to be completed by 2034. That's in roughly 19 years from now. Just to give you a scale of how fast development takes place in our community, the Bellwether Peninsula is approximately 250,000 square feet, and that's taken about 30 years to develop. We believe Berkeley Village is about 750,000 square feet, and that's taken 20 years to develop. So you can see a million square feet is an aggressive schedule. The fact is that the product, the project will be built out as market conditions dictate or warrant that development activity to take place. That's really will be the driver here, is the market, and not, not a schedule that we put forward 15 years before it's gonna take place. There are conditions for delays based on market conditions, but those don't apply to the granary building or to the second building. So those, those projects that need to be completed by 2021 do not have conditions in there for delays, but the rest of the development do. So how the agreement works is Harcourt purchased the land on a project-by-project basis. They're not gonna take down the entire 19 or 18.8 acres right on day one. They'll instead buy probably a two- or three-acre parcel. They will pay $20 per square foot for that parcel. That's a negotiated value, and I'll get to the next slide and tell you how we arrived at that price. The price does increase by 3% per year. You saw kind of a summary of the master development schedule they must adhere to on the previous slide. They have the option to lease that at the same price that they would buy it for. And then they're gonna pay us $200,000 for the granary building. I think it's important to note here that the price of $20 per square foot certainly could have been higher. It could argued, it could be argued that it could be lower. We arrived at that price not because we were trying to maximize the value of the land, but because we were trying to maximize the development of the land, get jobs down on the site, and return the property to productive use and back on the tax rolls. The $20 a square foot was arrived at based on multiple appraisals, so there are two appraisals were completed, based on the fact that the city was installing the infrastructure just to increase the value of the land. The fact that the land is a brownfield condition and has geotechnical and seismic considerations decreased the value. And then it also has some underground industrial infrastructure that will make building on the land a little more expensive than if you're building on a clean piece of property. Again, the goal of the port was to maximize the value of the land via putting it back to work, getting jobs on the site, economic development activity on the site, and putting it back on the tax rolls. These were factors the commission took into consideration. They may still be considering them, but they've already voted, so it's probably a little late for that. But they considered the Bellingham market. We're not a primary market. Seattle and Bellevue would be considered primary. We're not even a secondary market. That would be Everett or Tacoma. We are indeed a tertiary market, and that makes our land not quite as valuable, not quite as in high demand as you would in a Seattle market. And the reason I point that out to you is we're not gonna see high options prices paid for our land as you do down in like the South Lake Union area. Harcourt, Washington is a single-purpose entity. It's established just for the purpose of developing on this piece of property. It has no experience, it has no history outside of that. It does have key people involved in that company, and the agreement dictates that these key people stay involved in the project. They have to stay involved through a certain number of years, and those key people are named in the agreement. They're the reason we chose Harcourt, they had that development experience and expertise that we wanted. They have a lot of access to capital, international markets that we don't have access to, and they've demonstrated an understanding of developing in brownfield sites. The commission did have alternatives. They don't anymore, because this is a little late. They could have soaked out, sought out another master developer. They could have sold the downtown waterfront area parcel by parcel instead of as a big 19-acre chunk. Or they could have done the development themselves, similar to how they started the Bellwether Peninsula project. And then they could have done nothing, they could have sat on the property and waited for the value to increase. Again, I just want to point out that a key factor in their decision-making process was putting the property back to work. So do nothing, leaving a fenced-off brownfield area, really was not an option. And that concludes my presentation. I'll let Tara talk, and then we'll open up to questions.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Where's mine? Rob?
It's not there. Sorry.
We got the, the wrong one in there? So I'm going to verbally talk to you about...
That's okay. It's the way we used to do it.
You like that better anyway, Jean. So the city, again, this, this deal is between the Port of Bellingham and Harcourt. The city's commitments are laid out in the inter-local agreement between the city of Bellingham and the Port of Bellingham. We did review the draft agreement. Amy looked at it very carefully, just to make sure Rob wasn't trying to commit us to anything that we already hadn't committed to. So it is in line with our existing inter-local. We have received some questions about Harcourt's vision plan compared to the adopted master plan, the waterfront district subarea plan. And I just wanted to provide a few comments on that. I did submit to all of you kind of a more detailed list comparing the two, so if you need me to resend that to you, I certainly can. The key piece of infrastructure in the downtown waterfront area is, and actually, I can bring this up. I'll just show this one of Rob's here, is the granary, blowdell to Laurel connection. So Harcourt has kept that primary connection through the waterfront district, so that's compatible, as well as the commercial green here. Commercial green is a key feature in the adopted plan as well. So from that point of view, those are our two main arterials through the downtown waterfront area, and the downtown waterfront area is about right here, okay? This would be considered the log pond. So from our point of view, the two are consistent. We never envisioned that you could take the city's adopted master plan and go build from there. It's incredibly conceptual. It is almost more conceptual than what you're seeing on the screen. So a lot of detail has to be worked out in the engineering phase. Local streets are also compatible. What we're really looking at is making sure the blocks are broken up, like the scale feels good as a pedestrian, and Harcourt also has that kind of scale. So from a transportation perspective, the key access points are coming out where we had planned, and the internal circulation is being described here as within our adopted plan. The biggest deviation, oops, is here in the log pond area, which is outside of actually the agreement, I think the, the actual transaction area between the port and Harcourt. But we anticipate that it's gonna take a really long time before Harcourt gets into that area and starts developing, if they do so. We anticipate that there will be changes to this master plan over time, and so that may be required in the future. As far as parks go, they have the two primary features intact here, the Long Watkin Waterway, the Watkin Waterway Park, and commercial green. With regards to the parks, those transfers are outlined in the inter-local agreement, so that is a transaction that will be occurring between the city and the port. And any deviation on what has been adopted by you will take council action. So we have costs outlined and acreage outlined, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And then from a land use perspective, all of these uses that they outline here, commercial, residential, institutional, are all also compatible with the adopted plan. These are actually institutional uses, and those are allowed actually in both the, well, obviously, the institutional zone, which is where Western is, is expecting to be located, and they're also allowed in the log pond area.
Okay. Questions, comments? Not all at once. Jack?
I guess I have a few questions, but I'll try and keep them brief. Rob, with the 37 acres that, that the downtown waterfront area is, you're saying that 19, 19 of those acres are, are being set up with the Harcourt agreement, and then six is additional to Western Crossing?
That's correct. It's 18.8 acres with Harcourt. We rounded 19, and then the Western Crossing six is completely separate. Now, Harcourt has the option to go negotiate directly with the Western Crossing team and develop that six acres, but it would be a separate agreement to this, and it's by no means required.
Okay, and then looking at the development agreement, it looks like we got 4.6 acres is what we're discussing between the city for a park, park buyback from, from the port. So we're getting up to about, about 30 acres. Where's the other seven acres located, and what's happening with that, that land?
Right now, it's, there's no plans for it. Over time, it will be developed similar to the rest of the downtown waterfront area, but it is the area, most of that seven acres, I believe, is on the other side of the tracks. So at such time that the railroads relocated would be more conducive to develop that.
Okay, okay. With the, with the transfer between, or with, with that particular plan that Harcourt's presenting versus what we have in the master plan, is the commercial green footprint larger than it was in the master plan? And if so, is it being, is there acreage being taken away from the waterfront, the Waterway Park area? I mean, are we doing a net, is it a net 4.6 acres, or...
I don't believe that commercial green envisioned by Harcourt is any larger, but that would be a choice of the city of Bellingham. If we wanted to decrease the size of the acreage of Watkin Waterway Park, we would have to agree to that.
Will we, will we have the ability as a council to work with Harcourt and the port as far as where the location of the town square is? Because I, I'm having a little concern, because I brought this up in the past, where the, the apex of the little curve that was in the original master plan, and now we're talking about a town square, which you'd think that a town square is fairly important to the community. And in my mind, I think the aesthetics and the, what we would really like to see is maybe some of the key features of our community highlighted from the town square. For my purposes, I think Mount Baker is one of them, you know, just to be able to see Mount Baker. But when I stood at the apex of that, that curve, which is exactly where a town square is, all you can see is the Mount Baker apartments. You can't see Mount Baker. And so I bring this up one more time, just to say, you know, can we, can we adjust things? Can we, can we figure out ways where this is gonna work a little bit better? And I don't know if Harcourt's aware of this. I mean, I've tried to bring it up to whoever would listen to me, but...
They are aware that there's some concerns on commercial green. I think they have their own concerns on commercial green. So again, anything that they do that's separate from what's approved in the master plan will have to come before you for approval and in front of the Port Commission for approval. So I believe there will be ongoing discussions about commercial green.
Okay. Okay? Anybody?
Rob, I'm hoping you can help me to understand something. First of all, I think it's Harcourt, Bellingham, not Harcourt, Washington, that was on the slide. So it's very usual for developers to set up an LLC that does the actual development. But I guess what surprises me is that Harcourt, Bellingham is not a wholly-owned subsidiary of Harcourt Development. It's wholly owned by the principal of Harcourt Development.
Correct.
And you said you did due diligence, you looked at the Harcourt Development's balance sheet, their corporate office, but that balance sheet and that corporate office is not coming over. The three key individuals are coming over. So what you've really done is link to deal with those three individuals. You've bought expertise.
Correct.
And so Harcourt Development...
That's right.
...is really directly involved or technically involved.
Most of Harcourt's developments aren't fully-owned subsidiaries of the parent, of a parent company. Most of them are fully owned by Pat Dougherty, the owner of Harcourt. I believe in some of those developments, he has special partnerships with others, whether they're inside his company or out. I'm not privy to that information, but almost every development they do is set up as a separate, one-off entity, and that's very similar to what they did here as well. What we wanted from Harcourt was their expertise. We wanted their access to capital, and I believe we have that in this agreement.
Jack?
One last question. It has to do with the, I guess, the appraisals and the $20 a square foot. I just look at that and think about what we did just 16 months ago with, with our agreement. And I don't know, three of the council members voted for it, but there's new members, and I don't particularly like what we, what we agreed to. But what I guess I am interested in is that, you know, you were providing some very solid reasoning as to why it was chosen at $20 a square foot. But when I hear you say about, you know, trying to purpose the, the property as soon as possible and to try and, you know, and try and incentivize that, I guess I look at the same thing in terms of the, the parklands that would also benefit the entire project. And the fact that we are paying quite a bit more per square foot in this, in the inter-local agreement that we adopted just, you know, very recently. The new information apparently has come in through other appraisals. I guess the questions I have is, you know, were those other appraisals that are more recent better appraisals than the ones that were used in the formulation of the inter-local agreement? Can we reopen this and have a better discussion about why, why we're paying what we're paying versus what Harcourt's getting?
Yeah, no, that's a great question and a great observation, Jack. I think it's a different piece of property, and I think the appraisal is a different appraisal because of that. Most of the parkland coming to the city is waterfront, because it borders the water, therefore it would have a higher value. If we were selling that portion to a developer, we'd have a lot more than 20 bucks a foot. And then some other things that we're taking into consideration that don't necessarily or not applicable to parkland is the difficulty of building any kind of structures on a brownfield site that has industrial artifacts buried underground. We don't even know what's there. So as they're driving pile, they're gonna run into stuff that's gonna increase the cost of their development, and that was a big part of the deduct to the 20 bucks a foot. That's how we got there, was by saying, okay, what's this land valued at clean, and what's the difficulties of constructing on here, and what should that discount be?
Yeah, I would concede with the, with the waterfront argument. I would not concede that with commercial street green, you know, and that's a very large chunk of land. That's equivalent, an equivalent thing. If we want to go and put a park-related facility on that, we're having the same issues that Harcourt's having as far as brownfield.
True.
I'd like to add a couple things on the, the values, because I don't think I, I heard it. $25 a square foot is what the city negotiated, and then actually that deal is settled. It's in the inter-local agreement. Those are, all those fees, or excuse me, land costs outlined in the inter-local are fixed. They are not going to escalate over time. So the $25 is what we will pay 15 years from now, if that's when we get parts of commercial green. And also, the, the area that, that staff is pretty zeroed in on when we are negotiating is the area within 50 feet of the water bodies. And those areas, we're only paying, that's where a lot of our park is, we're only paying $2 a square foot.
Because they're gonna be underwater in a few years.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just have a general plea. The majority of our community members do not understand the difference between who owns what properties. I just beg you to please create positive redevelopment in this area. We continually get so much input about, why isn't the city doing anything? Why isn't the port doing anything? We really need to show the community some action in relation to this. And the notion that it's gonna take 50 years, I hear what you're saying, but man, let the economic circumstance dictate when that development will happen, because I don't want to be 90 seeing this finally developed. So please help us. Thank you.
I agree with you, council member. The, the pace of the development, and I can't emphasize this enough, is not gonna be dictated by a schedule on a piece of paper. It's gonna be dictated by what the economy and what the market conditions demand. And that's, the port's not gonna stand in the way for that. We're not, we may try and accelerate that to the extent we think it's justified, but not to the doom of the project, so...
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to a brief discussion on the Watkin County Jail. Go ahead, Peter. Because I really don't, to be honest with everybody, I don't know why we keep talking about this until we really have to act on it. I'm serious, because the county, you know, they're the ones that, but anyway, we gotta take a break, and then we'll be right back.
Oh, we're taking a break? We are? We don't have to, no?
We don't have to take a break, so, go ahead, Peter. I think they must have turned it down.
I'll just start.
I'll just start. To answer President Knutson's question, I actually believe that the council expressed some desire to talk about at least what was in the agreement. We're not asking to take any action. We're not asking anybody to take any action. But this is very complicated. It has already changed from what is in your packet, and we just want to keep you up to date. So when you are potentially asked to take a position, that you have as much information as possible. So that's why we're talking about it again.
So Peter Raffado, Legal Department, just to reinforce what Mayor Kelly has just said. I mean, we acknowledge that there's a larger discussion, the timing of the different councils, there's issues about the jail. But one of the things that ultimately will very likely need to be addressed isn't the interlocal agreement and the financing aspects, as well as some of the operational issues. And the more feedback we can get from you as that discussion continues, that will be helpful to us in working out those agreements. Again, acknowledging that those larger discussions will also be taking place, because ultimately, any interlocal agreement will have to come back to council, and it takes time to work out those details, given whatever policy direction we have from the council. And also, along the lines of what the mayor just said, what you have in the packet, we've actually had an updated proposal from the county that we received on Friday. The points in this presentation are based on what you have in the packet, and we haven't fully sort of digested what we've received from the county, because we received it on Friday. But I'll try to highlight those points where there have been changes based on what appears to be the case in that new document we received on Friday. Just to orient ourselves, and as a little by way of background, you've seen this table before. Brian Henshop prepared this. You can see that the county proposal, which is in the packet, is still this far right-hand column. And some of the key things that, and we'll be talking a little bit more about this, is the capital contribution here in the bottom is based on population. The term of the sales tax measure under the proposal in the packet is permanent, and then we have sort of the distribution of the sales tax money, as well as the contribution go hand in hand. What I would say in the agreement we received on Friday is that there's a little bit of movement towards this column, which is a utilization model. And that's because, at least with respect to the other cities, the capital contribution is based more on use. It's not necessarily completely based on the users of the jail, and how the ratio of use doesn't go necessarily hand in hand with the capital contribution. And I'll get into that a little bit more. So again, basic background, it's important to remember, the county is responsible for all the felony inmates and misdemeanor inmates from outside the cities. Cities are responsible for misdemeanor inmates from within the cities, and there are other entities that use the jail and are responsible for those inmates, namely tribal governments as well as state DOC. And one thing to keep in mind, as we try to develop principles in approaching this, is how does the responsibilities and the usage really factor into the proportionate contribution to the capital, the facility itself, as well as operations? So the, sort of the fundamental financial aspect of this agreement revolves around a proposed two-tenths of a percent of sales tax. And it's been challenging to sort of explain in some respects, I think, the distribution separating it from the capital contribution, because they kind of are tied together in the proposal from the county. But initially, you have the sixty-forty split between the county and the cities, which is based on the statute. What I'd like to emphasize is that that is, in this case, going to be driven by our agreement. It's going to be driven by the agreement, not the statute. And to give you an example of that, is we have an EMS sales tax agreement with the county, where it's, I believe it's the same thing, a sixty-forty split. And on the EMS side, we send all the money back to the county. So just because it's a sixty-forty split does not mean that that's where you have to start the, that's not where you have to start the agreement. And that's the main thing I want to point out there. And now we're kind of, again, blending the distribution and the capital contribution. But the county's proposal, in the first three years, has seventy-five percent of all city proceeds out of that forty percent going to the jail fund. We have some questions. I think the county's main idea there is that they need to build up a surplus. We want to understand that a little bit more. But I would also point out that that seventy-five percent is not based on usage. It is simply seventy-five percent of the forty. Now, third bullet point is sort of the essence of what the capital contribution is after the first three years, and that is two-point-four million dollar payment. Friday's proposal has that going down substantially, because they have modified some assumptions, and then they've taken some of the costs out. The two-point-four has gone down. I don't have that number with me, but one-point-seven, one-point-eight, one-point-seven or one-point-eight million. The bond assumption is now at six-point-three million. The way that's determined in the new agreement is, it is based on usage and not on population. As you can see in that bullet point, it's based on population and what you have in the packet. In the county's current proposal, it's based on usage among the cities, and they have modified, to some extent, the county overall contribution versus the city's overall contribution. So, well, just to give you the, just to give you the numbers on that, actually, on the next slide, that might, we'll deal with that a little bit. But in terms of duration, the last bullet point there, the original proposal had no limit on the duration of the sales tax measure. The proposal received on Friday has half of the sales tax measure, one-tenth of a percent, going away when the bonds are paid. The idea of that is, it would allow the cities to levy their own tenth of a percent. Because I want you to keep in mind, when we look at the hybrid, if the cities levy a tenth of a percent, the ratio is much better for the cities. You're looking at eighty-five percent going to the city and fifteen percent going to the county, as opposed to the forty-sixty split or the sixty-forty split. So one of the ideas is allowing that tenth of a percent to go away when the bonds are paid, which then would free up that levy capacity for the cities. But the one thing that does point out is, that's one thing that if we were to accept that aspect of the county proposal, the city would be foregoing the ability to levy that tenth of a percent. In talking about contribution, again, it's hard to separate that from the distribution, because again, we start from the sixty-forty split. And in the original proposal, the percentage was retained by each city based on population. Now it's based, at least among the cities, based on a usage rate. And so one of the questions we keep having to ask ourselves is, what is the equitable contribution to capital among the users? On historical bed usage, Bellingham's bed usage, you see there between thirteen and fifteen percent. You take all the cities together, and together, their usage is from eighteen to twenty percent, and the county's bed usage is seventy percent. You don't get to a hundred percent, because we have those non-party users. So the one thing that we see in the proposal on Friday, so the original proposal, the division between the cities and the counties was thirty-two percent was being paid by the cities on capital contribution, sixty-eight percent by the county. With this new proposal, it's twenty-eight percent by the cities, seventy-two percent by the county. So I'll leave that with you, and just, and something we're going to be continuing to talk to the county about in terms of, you know, what is the right distribution for, or the right allocation for capital contribution? We are working, and the current proposal does outline what revenue will be deposited into the jail fund. So in the next slide, we'll talk about uses of the jail fund, but we're trying to do as much as we can to make sure that the capital funds and the operational funds are separated. I think that gives all the parties a better ability to understand what the, you know, what money's going in and what money is going out and for what purpose. The bullet points on the left-hand side are, I think that's, I think there's pretty much agreement that at least those will be going into the jail fund. On the right side, I think we still have some more discussion to do with the county, interest on fund deposits, as well as capital payments by non-parties. So that bullet point highlights something that is in the agreement in both proposals, and that is that those entities that are not a party, when they pay their bed day use, they are going to be charged a capital amount, because they haven't participated in the capital contribution. But we're working through that issue as to what's the best way to apply that capital contribution amount, once it's received from the non-parties, when they use the jail. The flip side of money going into the jail fund is, okay, what are the appropriate uses for the jail fund? Obviously, any, the capital for the new jail. Early retirement of bonds, this raises a policy question. One of the comments at one point we made to the county is, you know, let's try to get all the bonds paid off as soon as possible. That's a policy decision. You free up that tenth of a percent, if we're going under that model earlier. But the other idea, and I think the way the county's leaning right now, is that those bond, that you wouldn't necessarily pay off the bonds early, because when you pay off the bonds early, you are allocating more money to that payment, and you have less for operational expense. But that's a policy decision that we're going to have to, you know, work through. Demolition and staging area, right now, that's part of the county proposal, that the current jail that's going to be demolished and the building of a staging area is going to be something that is part of this package, that's going to be financed by all the parties. Land acquisition was included in the original proposal, is something we're all paying for. Keep in mind that I think land acquisition was really paid for by the existing tenth of a percent jail. In the most recent proposal, the county has removed that land acquisition from the project and from what these funds will be used for. And they've also removed, I believe, all pre-construction costs that have already been financed by the existing tenth of a percent, if they predate January one, two thousand and fifteen. One thing we'll be looking for clarification are additional phases to the jail. And this last bullet point is very important. To what extent will these jail funds, this special fund that mainly is for capital, how much of that can be used for operation? We want to pay attention to these issues as we move through this, and that is addressing the various changes in assumptions. Keep in mind that this jail is pre-designed. I think they have very little design. It's basically conceptual at this point. So what if cost of construction is less than or greater than the estimate? What if we change the financial assumptions? Now, what we received on Friday has a certain set of assumptions. It's a lower interest rate. It's thirty years. I think it's five percent interest rate. What happens if there are additional revenue sources for construction? I mean, we anticipate that non-parties will be paying, for example, a portion of capital through their bed day charges. And then what if sales tax revenue receipts are greater or lower than expected? Operational issues, services, jail capacity, one thing built into the current proposal is that the parties that have contributed towards capital will sort of have first priority. The jail will not be accepting inmates from non-parties when they're at capacity. They will be if they're not at capacity. Scoping levels of service, we anticipate that there will be things available to the prosecutors, to public defenders in the form of web-based hearings. But we'd like to see some expectation built in to the agreement. But I think that is planned by the county, that they are going to have some of those things available to help reduce costs. Third bullet point, again, how will that courthouse staging area serve the cities? It's built into the project. It's built into what the parties are paying for, and we want to flesh that out. And then the existing Division Street facility, the most recent proposal by the county on Friday, it wasn't addressed in the original proposal, I believe, in the Friday proposal. The idea is that if they do sell that facility, it will be used for behavioral health programs, is my understanding. But that isn't fleshed out in a lot of detail. Operational issues in terms of cost. So the basic premise of this agreement is that the county will be setting their fees and charges through its budget process. So having invested in this facility, at least partially, you know, the cities have some interest in what increases in operational charges may be. And really, what we're looking for is a formula. We want to understand the formula for what revenue is applied to cost before those costs are then passed on to the various users of the jail. And more specifically, the next slide kind of tells you some of the things we're looking at. To what, in what way does the existing tenth of a percent factor into operational charges to users? What, you know, to the extent behavioral health funds that are used in the jail, is that something that then is charged again to the users, or is that something that the community arguably has already paid for? How are we going to use the capital charges to non-parties? Right now, it's proposed that that go to lower operating expenses. It's not to pay off bonds early. And finally, certain fees are collected from program participants. For example, the electronic monitoring for participants, they pay those fees. We want to ensure that those are credited to the city. And the last slide is just the term of the contract. So the current proposal received on Friday, same as the original proposal for the most part, it allows the interlocal agreement to be terminable by any party after payment of the bonds with one-year notice. I think it's important that, I think we'll be able to get the county on this, to agree to this, is that really, a city should have access, I think, to the facility after having invested in it. So it can't be sort of like, okay, now it's terminated. But hopefully, we'll be able to include something that says, you can have a termination, but there can be a renegotiation for access to the facility after the parties have invested in it. So if there's any feedback, it'd be much appreciated.
On the operational issues, the capital charges to non-parties, you had stated that the non-parties would be charged a higher user fee than the cities and others who are paying for it, to make up for them not paying on the construction costs and things. Well, shouldn't that percent, that amount higher than the regular usage fee be used then to pay down the bond, as opposed to use for operational costs? Because if that's why they're being charged that higher cost, you know, I think it would only be right that that be used to go towards, to go towards paying down the bond, just like we're doing.
So that is a policy, I mean, I'm very interested in the council feedback on that topic. The, in the comments that we sent back, that, Councilmember Bornham, and that's what we proposed, that those be used to go towards that. But what came back, and I don't know, maybe the small cities are more interested in keeping their operational costs down, I don't know. But that's, that's still, I don't think that's been totally settled. But I appreciate that feedback.
Was it going to be used to reduce our operational cost, or reduce the county's operational cost? Because there's a difference.
It's been proposed to reduce all parties' operational costs.
Okay.
Any other questions? Dan?
So, Mr. Raffado, you said that the potential for behavioral health dollars would be contingent on the sale of the Division Street property. Is that correct?
I don't want to say that that's the only way that they'll use it. I just, that's the only, that's the only way in which they will apply behavioral use dollars. I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is that, I believe that is one, that they want to put that in addition to whatever else is out there towards that. So I'm not saying that it's contingent on the sale of the property. Again, we're kind of evaluating something that came in on Friday. It's not fleshed out, but I don't want to suggest that they're saying that they're only going to apply those dollars. In fact, they're already applying those dollars in the jail, based on looking at the way they've charged out... they've charged out, and they've allocated expenses to their fund, I, I believe there's three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars of behavioral health funds going into the jail. And so one of the things we're grappling with was, well, should that be taken off the top, in a sense, before you figure out the charges to the cities, or should that be something that is actually included as a, a cost allocated in the bed day charge?
I believe there's a glaring omission under the, what are the appropriate uses of jail fund, and that is the diversion program, programming that we've been talking about here, been having discussions about this for weeks now, and nowhere in this proposal are, are there dollars associated with either capital improvements, or ongoing operational funding, and there is an organization called the North Sound Mental Health Administration, and they would be able to provide funding for some types of behavioral health diversion programming, would be up to the county, I believe, to probably come up with some other capital improvement dollars, to build a facility, like a triage facility that we've been talking about here, either for mental health illness treatment, or chemical dependency treatment, or, or both, there are some considerations on how you cite the, those two facilities together, but I, I do feel like we're missing the, an opportunity here to, to really address the root causes, again, of what the, what the main issues are, and what the majority of the population in the jail, with what they're experiencing, or what, or what the drivers or causes are, as to why they got there. Seventy percent of inmates have a mental health illness, or have a chemical dependency problem, I think we need to be addressing that.
Yeah, I think Brian might have some more information on that, I mean, I think the one thing I would say is that, you know, the county, the county's proposal does envision certain, a certain percentage of that forty percent coming back to the cities, to spend in, in a fashion that the cities see fit, and that number has gone up because they have lowered the bond payment, so that number, again, it's different in the first three years than it is in year four, but I just want, that, that is one piece of it, is the extent, the extent to which the cities see a rebate, gives the city of Belingham, for example, an opportunity to spend that money. The question that we're struggling with is, what's the right number, what's the right ratio, but Brian, you might have more on that, too.
Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office, I handed this out, and I just wanted to put up on the overhead as well, this is provided from the county, Sheriff Elfo, I believe, has responded to some council comments as well, but this, this articulates what they do, and to your point, Dan, I think some of this is, is provided to that, that point, this is what the, the county does for diversion, and it's currently, so seven hundred thousand within the jail itself, there's county services listed there, the four, five things, a triage center is listed as one of those county services, the, the community investment, then, those are also, I believe, provided through that behavioral health fund, so I think the total there is, you know, somewhere in the four million dollar range, maybe a little bit more, I don't know if that helps address your, your comment on that.
Thank you, it does, and I wanna be clear, too, I'm not opposed to a, a new correctional facility, I think, you know, there's no, no question that we need that in this community, I was just in the jail, not as a offender, but as a person on a tour with Chief Jones a couple of weeks ago, and that was my second time going through that tour, it's very clear that we need a correctional facility, what I, what I don't wanna miss, though, is an opportunity to have a comprehensive look at these types of programs, as well as the very innovative upstream programs that Chief Cook and Chief Newbold have enacted with the Neighborhood Police Officer Program, and the Community Paramedic Program, I wanna look and analyze the data, how are we doing on those, on those programs, as well as the mental health court that's listed here, the wellness court, they just had their first calendar probably two months ago, so, these programs are relatively new, but it would be nice to understand the impacts of them, as well as looking downstream at housing options for offenders, so we are looking at the complete picture, not just for the correctional facility itself.
So what I just passed out again was, this is, just to your point, if I may, about sort of looking at the bigger picture, I'm not sure if I can. So this is, right now, these are resources that the city largely funds, this will be for 2015, and, and into 16, so for the biennium, so in that first, the first section that's marked activity and description goes across, that is about two and a half million dollars worth of investment, and then the, the upcoming projects, those are, those are pending, this will come before you, in a little bit different format, on May 4, I believe, but I wanted to, to point out a couple of things, one is that some of these were recommendations that were made to the mayor, through her community institutions work group on public health and safety, she proposed those back, and during the budget process last year, approved ultimately by council late last year. To your point, Dan, there's, there's a couple of things in there, Community Paramedic Program, that's, that's ongoing, intensive case management there, towards the, the bottom of the page, it's a pretty substantial investment, I guess it's, it's worth noting, I think, that what the city has done, and what the city's tried to do, is provide preventive services for at-risk populations. And, and when we look at that at-risk population, we're focusing on homeless, we know that they're at risk of a, a variety of things, so this is preventative in nature, when they're in the system, if they've committed, if, if someone's committed a crime, or they've been arrested, that's largely where the alternative, where the diversion programs take place. So, I think ideally, our services are preventive in nature, to prevent that, going to jail, or, or being arrested, things that, that contribute to that, and we've identified homelessness as something that puts you at risk to do things that might have you end up in jail, so.
Michael?
Oh, I forgot even what I was gonna talk about, let me just say a few things, the revenue is actually three point nine billion dollars per year for the existing one percent, this is a little, spending a little over four million, just because they don't always spend everything in every year.
Talking at the county?
The county's existing one, to your points, Peter, I really appreciate that we have to be very careful about the accounting, and I do believe, if the entire community is already paying for certain jail services, that should be included in the accounting, we shouldn't have to pay for something we're already paying for through the existing point one percent sales tax. Like, I, I appreciate in many of your comments, how you were being very careful about the accounting, I, I agree with Terry, if you charge someone a capital surcharge, it should go towards paying off the capital, I think, you know, you shouldn't shift around between operational capital categories, I, I think we need a cleaner accounting, I'd like us to agree to a cleaner accounting system, and I appreciate all the concerns that you've raised, on how the existing one percent is being used, looking that closely, and about the capital charge, and also, if there are any fees collected for programs, those should be credited to the operational aspect, too, that's probably not gonna be a very large fee, but I, I just wanna say that I support how carefully you're looking at the accounting, so that when we do have a new jail, which I agree we need, that it's, the, the costs are apportioned fairly, so just strictly on this financial aspect, I'm, I like where, what you're looking at.
Terry?
Yeah, yeah, I just, you know, I have to echo what Dan was, was saying, when they presented, when, when the county exec presented the first presentation to us, they listed these recommendations from their advisory board, they listed all the recommendations except one, and that was for diversion and alternative to jail, that their advisory committee recommended, they just kinda, oh, we're not gonna list that one, because that's the one they decided they didn't want, but that's what their advisory committee stated, and I still agree, this is the best bang for the buck, in terms of jail funding, and it's a portion of that, or going towards those kind of pres- preventative and diversion programs, so, just because they're not listing it out there, I'm not ready to let it go, so I just, I'm gonna keep that out there, that I still think that is the best bang for our buck, in terms of, of jail thing, yes, we need a new jail, and yes, we need, but the size depends on how much we're willing to invest on some of these other programs, and we can cut that, and the most expensive way is housing, and warehousing people, so I'll just wanna keep that out there.
Okay, Michael, one last question, then we're gonna move on.
Actually, it's not a question, it's a statement of agreement, what Terry's saying, and what Terry's saying, I think I've also heard from members of the county council, long ago, two years ago, and this is winding, or starting to wind up, I guess, the county council members made it clear, they wanted the whole context of the social services that would prevent the need to jail people, as well as to find ways to divert or treat in alternate fashions those who do end up getting in trouble with the law, and are, might be bound for the prison. I think any decision that we make, that the public makes, that the county makes, on a jail, can only be made, only make sense in that larger context, because that's how we reduce our costs, that's how we save our taxpayers' dollars, that's also how we provide a just and more fair, you know, service model to our public, so, I also know we need a new jail, and we have to find a way to pay for it, and hopefully soon, but until these other contextual issues are addressed, I'm with, I'm with Terry, this is the cheapest way, the best bang for the buck, to avoid problems in our community.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Peter, thank you, Brian, we'll now go to our last item on committee, not our last item, but close to the last, an ordinance amending Chapter 10.28, Belheim Municipal Code, to authorize voluntary compliance agreements with property owners where the violation does not create a risk imminent harm to public safety or public health. Thanks for your patience. Okay, Peter Raffado, I'll start this one out, if it's okay. This is a, really, a, a tool that we're looking to explicitly insert into the code, it's an ordinance that would authorize voluntary compliance agreements. Again, it's, it's really a, a code compliance tool, I think it would be used in just, not a lot of cases, but in some cases, that, we have Jason Napier, that, from the code enforcement officer from the fire department, here, and I wanna give some preliminary statements, we also have James Herb from, who took the lead in drafting the ordinance, but the things I'd like to emphasize is that, you know, I think that this is when you have a long-term fix, a costly fix, for, for example, a business, to get in compliance with the code, and it's also in cases where there's a retroactive, a law that applies retroactively to a business, and it's really to meet, meet the intent of the code, to get a workout and some milestones, so you get, you get some safety along the way, but you may not be able to achieve it in the timeline that's envisioned in our code. And this is not being submitted for a vote, in turn, it's really for discussion, and to get direction, and, and guidance from the council. In some cases, when you have a code compliance problem, these, these, these things are worked out by agreement, a lot of times they are, this really gives some explicit authority, and some real clear guidelines to code enforcement officers, and to have some, again, some real clear conditions, some clear timelines, and it's, it provides that tool within the code. With that, I'd turn it over to, well, however you wanna do it, if you wanna go through the, the, the structure of the code, it's, the code change itself, or the examples, either way, but.
Well, I'll defer to Jason to begin.
Good afternoon, Jason Napier, Fire Marshal. So as Peter mentioned, this is just another tool in our toolbox. The state laws that we enforce basically tell us the end game that we have to get to, but with the recession, the way it's been, we've been trying to work really closely with our customers to try to get them to that end game, which is compliance, and oftentimes, these fixes take a period of time and revenue to get completed. So one example is a new business restaurant moving into an existing restaurant location. The code wouldn't necessarily require any permits to do so, because it's the same use, if the kitchen's laid out the same, they can pretty much move in. Well, when we come by for our annual inspection, a year later, we may find that they've actually changed the menu, where the previous restaurant was under restrictions not to cook a bunch of grease-laden food, like frying meats and stuff, that activity requires a special kind of hood that doesn't have holes in it, it's leak, it's sealed and welded, and it also has a suppression system to put the fire out. So if you had a place that had soups and things like that, that didn't have a lot of frying, moving somebody in with a deep-fat fryer, or woks, or something of that nature that put off a lot of vapors, the hood isn't prepared to take that grease into, inside of it, and it's not protected with a suppression system. So this tool would allow us to, one, work with the customer to agree that there's something wrong that they need to fix, and set up a due date to get it completed, with the additional ability to set terms to it, so we could work with them to increase the frequency of their hood cleaning, to try to reduce the risk in the interim period, we could also help them understand what they might do to their menu in the interim, to try to reduce the risk, to keep it as safe as we can while we're working through the process. And the current law doesn't really give me the parameters to do that, so this is a valid tool for that. The other thing that Peter brought up was retroactivity, we don't really have a lot of choices from that, that comes down from state legislature, so we currently have some retroactive firearm requirements that we're preparing to start contacting owners of certain kinds of apartments, that may have to retroactively install fire alarms. This would be a valuable tool in that, so that we could set up due dates with them, maybe six months to a year out, allow them to gather the funds for that, which I currently wouldn't have. So, this is a valuable tool to add to our toolboxes enforcers, so that we can help work with our community customers.
Okay, council, oh, Jim, excuse me, I'm just overwhelmed, there's no slideshow, so, go ahead, no, no, just go ahead.
Okay, I was just, very briefly, on the structure, right now, we do have some departments that do engage in these types of discussions and negotiations, after we've already gone through the process of notifying somebody, issuing a citation, and getting into that kind of contested enforcement environment. The idea here is that we could avoid going through a contested action, have the property owners recognize upfront that, yes, there is a problem, we are willing to deal with it, and divert their resources from defending the action, and, and lawyering up, so to speak, to go ahead and start using that money to, to start solving the problem, so we get to that end result, like Jason was talking about, a lot quicker, with, you know, basically voluntarily, versus having somebody dragged there kicking and screaming after a contested enforcement action.
So this seems like it's a pretty good idea, what, what have you heard, or what do you think are the downsides of doing this?
I would just, I, I don't know of any downsides, honestly, there was some, I, I know that there was some commentary, some concerns expressed, that this was, this, honestly, I don't totally understand the concerns, but they had to do with discretion and targeting individuals or homelessness, honestly, I don't know where that comes from, this is certainly not, I, I don't see how this relates to homelessness, that was one of the concerns raised. Another concern raised was, again, the, the element of discretion, the reality is that code enforcement officers have discretion, that's what their expertise is for, they're problem solvers, so I don't see a downside in that respect, because right now, they have to exercise their discretion on a daily basis. And one of the, one of the benefits I see to it is, and I think this could be used, this could be used before notice of violation, it could be used after a notice of violation, I think one thing it would, will do is to fl- flush out those that are serious, when they say, yeah, I'm going to fix that over a period of time, versus those that are not, because you have to be pretty serious to enter into this agreement, because it has some, some teeth to it, once you sign it, so if someone is admitting that they're, is saying they're gonna fix it, but they're unwilling to enter in one of these agreements, I think you have an indication that you might just have to go forward with a contested action, so that's one of the benefits I see to it. Right, Dan?
You gave a great business option, but this would be just as applicable to residential considerations, too, right?
I think it could be used in the right circumstance in that setting, yes, and one thing I would say is, one of the other concerns raised was that it's in our nuisance section, that's really just a function of how our code is set up, this will, could apply in lots of different contexts, fire code, building code, for example, but instead of trying to insert this language in our different codes, we need, we had, wanted some central place to locate this provision, and our nuisance code arguably is kind of that umbrella code provision to deal with some of these different areas. Michael?
Yeah, following on that point in particular, the, the recitals refer to three code enforcement areas, so the nuisance code, the violations of the building code, where public safety is at risk, and the violation of the fire code, where again, where public safety is at risk, but that's in the, whereas of the recitals, to what sort of code violations could this apply, how broadly can it apply, or how narrowly can it apply?
That's a great question, I, I think the idea is that it would, it would apply quite broadly, just as Peter's saying, the nuisance chapter is really the umbrella chapter, and kind of subsumes, even the definition of a code enforcement officer under the nuisance chapter includes the fire official, the chief of police, the planning director, and the public works director, so, there are different chapters within our code that deal with different violations, stormwater violations, for example, or critical areas violations, I mean, any of those things are. I mean, any of those things are, it, it could theoretically be used in any of those circumstances to address an issue, depending on the applicability and, and the, basically the discretion of the official who's investigating that particular issue.
So, it almost sounds like we need to rename the nuisance section, because nuisance has a pretty narrow term sometimes legally. And this is more like threats to public safety section, or something like that. And it would apply to anything in there?
I, I mean, I can, my feeling, I think nuisance is like the original catch-all, like common law.
Okay.
Code enforcement. And so, and now we have all these specialized codes. We still have nuisance because, you know, try as we might, we still haven't been able to identify everything that's a nuisance in, in great detail. So, we still have some catch-all in there.
Why are you looking at us when you say that?
I have one more question. I'm trying to figure out, when I first looked at this, it looks like it might be a softer approach. You know, you've got a violation, it's been discovered, you're about to be cited. This seems like it's a softer approach. But on reading it, it looked, I can't quite, it seems like it's also a harder approach. That goes to what you said. If you agree to go this softer approach, and you fall down, now the hammer is twice as heavy as it would have been. Is that an accurate way to describe it? It looks like it's softer, but it's actually heavier if you fail?
I, I don't agree with that characterization. I think that the idea is that it, it is a softer approach. It's a more, it is a voluntary approach. You're working with the property owners to get them to volunteer to do it. They don't have to do it. If we talk to any property owners that aren't interested in taking advantage of this opportunity, and working with the city to solve a problem, we still have the other tools in our toolbox. We can still say, okay, well, in that case, here's your notice of violation. We'll be back in seven days with your citation, and we'll see you in court. And we can go down that road if we have to. This is way outside of that. And the rights that they're giving up are really more procedural, due process type rights that they do have if we have to go that route. So, what they're giving up is the opportunity to come into court and contest that notice of, of violation. They're giving up those things and saying that I will treat the problem as it needs to be dealt with now, rather than you forcing me to, to deal with it later. So, I don't think that there's a bigger hammer later. The hammer is really the same, if you want to use that.
Okay, so it's sound like.
It's just what, you know, what is going, what is going to be coming before that, either a voluntary agreement, or a judge saying, this is a violation.
Okay, to, to go too far with the metaphor, probably, it sounds like the hammer's not heavier, but now they've agreed to hold still while we use the hammer, you know?
Yes, I think that's a, a fair way to talk about it. And I've been in meetings about this for quite some time now, with, with Jason in particular. And the idea here is that there are some of these property, property owners and some of these businesses that we, we do kind of know about, and some of these retroactive code things, that they will be very expensive for businesses to comply with. And the, the opportunity now is for Jason to maybe red-tag a business and put, you know, a restaurant or something out of business, because they don't have the funds on hand to change out a hood, or something like that, or say, hey, we know that's going to take a little bit of time, and, and we'll work with you to do that. So, I think it is a softer approach, and hopefully we'll have some property owners that want to take advantage of it.
Okay, counsel, what's your wishes? You want to bring this back for a vote, or you want to bring it back, bring it back next week, or whenever? When do we meet again? You think I should know? I mean.
We'll bring it back at the next meeting, if, if that sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for waiting. We have two sets of amendments to approve. One is for March 23rd committee meeting minutes.
Move approval.
Second. Motion being made second. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries seven zero. And approval of March 8, special meetings on the jail discussion. March 18th, I'm sorry.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion being made second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries seven zero. All or new business? Michael?
Yeah, I've got some new business. So, this afternoon, we heard about the Lake Wacom plan. And what I've noticed for a while is that our plan fits our current budget. We're doing what we can within the amount of money that we have. And I, I felt for a while that our solution needs to match the problem, not just match our funding. Staff has already presented to the policy group, based on some ballpark estimates, that it might be possible to accelerate the cleaning up of the lake if we could double the amount of money that we provide, doubling it from $2 million a year to more like $4 million a year. But there's been no discussion on how we might possibly breach that, that gap in funding, if it's even possible, and what mechanisms we could use. So, I would like to move that the council requests the administration for some more information on possible ways the city and the county, or anybody can come up with a funding gap to possibly accelerate the cleanup of the lake from its current pace to a quicker pace.
I'd, I'd be willing to second that. I think the question that comes back to us over and over and over again, is people are saying, you're not doing enough, and you're not doing it quickly enough. So, maybe we could take a look at what that would take, so people can make an evaluation on what kind of commitment they would like to make in that.
Mayor?
Well, since this is one of those other things that I don't want to be dead before we're making significant progress, and it's been a 20-year traverse so far, I think it's great to talk about that. I want to, I just want to reassure everybody that we, while we have a longer plan, part of that goal of that plan is if we have extra money to do it sooner. And I think it'd be good to have the, the conversation about the practicality and the effectiveness of the length of time it's taken to get where we are, and what really is going to be effective. So, so, we're being very cost-effective about our, our investments. And I think the other part of that is, before I forget, oh, what, what actually it is that we're, we're putting the money into. So, there's, there's a whole, as you saw this morning, Michael, a whole strategy of things that we can do. And it might make sense to put more money over here than over here. The staff has a presentation that we can give to you about what we actually do, and what we have done, and what difference it's made. And then, I think the, we haven't had Robin Matthews' presentation yet, I don't think.
No.
Yeah. And I think that her new state of the lake presentation gives us some good news about how effective some of the things we're doing have been. And I think, I hope the council will seriously look at what she has to present to us, too. But there's nothing that prohibits us from going faster. It's, it's basically the investment, and not just an investment, but the right investment.
Restate your motion again.
Sure. It's a request for information from the staff to look at ways to increase the funding shortfall for a faster cleanup of the lake. Right now, we don't know how possible that is to do. As Ted Carlson said, you know, always more can be done. Well, the one thing standing in the way is maybe how much resources we have. What are the resources we could have? What would it compete with? How would it be done? Right now, we're defaulting to the current rate of cleanup based on the current funding. I'd like to be able to discuss what additionally might be available, so we can decide once and for all, can we afford to go faster, and how would we do that?
Okay. Any further discussion? Jack?
I support cleaning up the lake faster. I'll support this motion.
Okay. All those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries seven zero. Any other old or new business? Seeing none, we will see you tonight. Meeting adjourned.
Executive session?
No executive session. None.